I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, July 22, 2014, to order. Can I have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Schuler?
Here.
Mrs. Clemmensen?
Here.
Mr. Borkowski?
Here.
Mr. Lemke?
Here.
Mr. Folker?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fowler. We are going to begin this evening with the President's Report. In lieu of Mr. Anderson's absence, he has asked me to give a President's Report, which I will affectionately call the Vice President's Report. Last August, I had the opportunity to welcome our staff back to school. The students hadn't yet entered the buildings and the walls in classrooms minus stacked chairs and tables were fairly desolate. The slate was clean and all things were possible. So here we are once again. The summer is nearing its end. Family vacations, camps, and neighborhood barbecues will be replaced with bustling hallways, re-energized sports fields, and not-so-beloved early morning bells. The school calendar innately offers a rarely-found opportunity for a true do-over. As students remove the packaging of new folders and reflect on novels recently read at their leisure, teachers are preparing lessons infused with creative ideas found through summer curriculum work and continuing personal and professional development. While the fall offers excitement and hope, without ample and focused preparation, this valuable opportunity to restart can be wasted. But it won't be. With great confidence, I can say our destination is clear. We, as a board and as a community, have created a vision that clearly identifies where we want to go. Over the past few months, while students have had time to participate in a myriad of experiences, the district has been working to make the 2014-2015 school year one of growth for students and staff alike. We have seen the addition of roles: building math specialists, a consultant to assist us in gathering and deciphering metrics, and a director of student learning, just to name a few. Shifts in administrative duties and selections of instructional tools and modalities have been made to better align us with our vision. The past year frankly was not easy. It was filled with important listening, dissection, reflection, and decision-making. The previous year, though, has District 67 poised for a year of progress. The high expectations that August brings in the world of education will be palpable as our students and teachers fill our buildings once again. As potential meets thoughtful, clear, and responsible planning, our staff and students are afforded the engagement, growth, and limitless possibilities they deserve. Thank you. Now we are going to move on to the Superintendent's Report. Mr. Semig?
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher, and I'll add to a couple of the comments that you made, one of those being about the expert in student metrics and achievement. And a couple of things at the end of my report that will link to that. And my report's going to be talking about the extension of the mission-vision milestones. So in April, the Board of Education approved the mission and vision milestones, and it bears reviewing the purpose of each of those things. The mission is why an organization exists, and the vision is who the organization wants to be in 10 years. And milestones are things that will be true along the way if we are accomplishing our vision. The administration was charged with creating strategies and tactics to make the milestones a reality, or those markers along the way towards achieving the vision. Literally the day after school ended, 55 teachers, LFEA representatives, administrators, community members, and board members, including Mrs. Fisher, from District 65, 67, and 115 came together to plan the work of the future. That work began with a data set for groups to review and consider as they looked at what was next. They then drafted what will be a working document for the summer, which has been distributed to the participants already, which administrators will review, triage, and capture a more refined version of that work. And then on August 11, that same group will reconvene as part of our annual two-day administrative advance meeting. Notably, this is the first time that teachers have been invited to participate in these meetings. It has been in my experience that teachers add greatly to making better plans, and as the Harvard Business Review stated in a recent issue, "Show me a company where the doers are different than the planners, and we'll show you a company where what gets done is different than what got planned." The timing of this meeting was important and also very intentional. It was designed to capture people's interests and energies immediately after the school year ended, to give them time to think about things over the summer, and for administrators to work on that document over the entire summer. In any industry, it's the case that the best people often do their thinking away from work, and we wanted to capitalize on that fact to benefit our organizations, our staff, and especially our students. I'll have a further update in our September meeting after our annual advance meetings. I also wanted to add that today, we began more work that we'll discuss in our September meeting. That was Steve Cordigan, who is the data guy for District 214, the second-largest high school district in the state, and one of the most influential people in his field, probably the most influential guy in the field in the state, regular contact with the state superintendent of schools. He joined us for a meeting today to look at what metrics we should be using, defining what we value, and then how we can measure it. And one of the interesting things was how many things he added to the conversation that were new bits of information for us. So a vast array of experience and knowledge that we now have at our disposal, we're really pleased with. So with that, that ends the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Semig. Now we will move on to public participation. A word about public participation before we offer it. The Lake Forest Boards of Education welcome public attendance and participation at all meetings. It is hoped that by utilizing these guidelines, participation will be maximized, both in terms of fairness and organization. After being recognized by the Board President, interested speakers should come to the microphone and state their name and address before addressing the board. Each person will be limited to a maximum of three minutes to speak. Everyone has a right, within reason, to be heard respectfully. Members of the public will not be allowed to speak a second time until all members of the audience who wish to speak have been allowed to do so. Public comments should not be redundant, and all comments should be directed to the board and not the audience. To provide accurate responses, detailed questions posed to the board during public comment will be listened to and taken under advisement. The public is always welcome to meet with school officials to receive information, discuss ideas, or express concerns. If the public has any letters or other written materials, they may be handed to the board clerk for public record. Thank you. All right. As we move along, trying to probably -- oh, I'm so sorry! Thank you so much!
He told us the rule.
Thank you, Mr. Lemke. Would anybody here like to approach the podium? This is public participation. Seeing none, we will move on. But thank you, Mr. Lemke, anyway. Okay, now we're going to move on to reports and discussions. So our first report will be from the Board Committees and the Board Education Committee, chaired by myself and fellow members Jeff Folker and Beth Clemmensen. I will report the minutes. The Education Committee met Monday, July 14, from 9:15 to 11:35 a.m. Present were Beth Clemmensen, Lauren Fagel, Leslie Fisher, Jeff Folker, Lorraine Greve, Sudha Kishnesswamy, Kelly Jackson, Susan Milsk, and Lori Wilcox. It is important to note that typically, the Education Committee does not meet during the summer months. However, with much change going on, Mrs. Fagel was gracious in organizing a meeting, and the community and additional staff members were gracious in giving up their time. First, we discussed summer curriculum work. There was a progress report. Atlas Curriculum Mapping Software has been available for nearly 20 years. While teachers in 67 have maintained documents that have curriculum by grade level and subject, this will allow changes to occur in real-time, all in one place, with parents and the wider public, students, and staff having access. This Atlas Curriculum Mapping Software that we are incorporating into our district will benefit new teachers, teachers changing grade levels and subjects, and offer clarity for parents and students alike. Summer curriculum time will be devoted to updating this Atlas Curriculum Mapping Software on an annual basis, and this program will be overseen by Mrs. Fagel. Kelly Jackson also joined the meeting and shared the work of the Cherokee staff regarding the Inspiration Block and the Advanced Language Acquisition Block. On June 23, kindergarten, third, and fourth grade teams, and including the lead science teacher, as well as representatives from grades one and two at Cherokee, met to plan for the upcoming year. In mid-August, the whole staff will come together to review and focus on habits of mind, something that we, as a board, focused on and learned much more about during our visioning process. Examples of habits of mind include no quick answers, empathetic listening, and metacognition. Habits of mind are emphasized in problem-based learning. They are emphasized in the Common Core standards. The Charlotte Danielson evaluation process measures these habits of mind and best practice recommends them. Using project-based learning model will help kids become better questioners themselves. It is aligned with the Charlotte Danielson Teacher Performance Evaluation, and project-based learning has authentic driving questions, thematically-based units, very different from a traditional project unit, and it is measured with a rubric. One of the examples that was shared at the meeting that I think rang, resonated with Jeff and Beth and myself, and you can add in here if you like, was the idea of typically when we think of a project-based unit, you picture, you do a project, you work with groups in class, maybe you finish off with a field trip. Think of sort of, and it seems to be that the flipped classroom is used in many ways nowadays, think of instead, the unit's going to be studying Chicago. First thing we're going to do is we are going to take a field trip down to the city. We're going to see some of the spots down there. Then when we come back, we may split up into groups, some people may work individually, maybe there was something that sparked your interest. Maybe you want to create an itinerary for travelers coming to Chicago and some of the main sights, seeing the tourist spots. Maybe you really want to focus on the Chicago Fire because you're very interested in the history of Chicago. So there is a driven question created by the teacher under this model, but as the project percolates, things are generated by the students. Did you want to add anything, Beth or Jeff? Okay. All right. Ms. Jackson also talked about the notion of Inspiration Share Nights for Cherokee beginning next year, and there will be a Board of Ed presentation in September regarding the Advanced Acquisition Block and the Inspiration Block. So we'll look forward to hearing from Ms. Jackson at that time. We touched base a little bit on the J. McTeague Workshop. J. McTeague is an Understanding by Design co-founder. He presented to our staff recently, and I believe Mrs. Fagel will follow up with that at our next Education Committee meeting, as we did run long on time. But we look forward to hearing about that. The math curriculum update. The Bridges Program will now be expanded to the fifth grade. Grade six, as we have discussed in the past, we've talked about how certain grade levels have to be scaffolded in order to get our students through Algebra I by the completion of Dear Path. So grade six will be the year of scaffolding in order for students to complete that. The text used for seventh and eighth grade, Algebra for Core, Explorer, and possibly Quest, is Pearson 2015, and the math teachers seem very comfortable with this text and confident in it. Agile Minds online curriculum, and you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Fagel, will be discontinued moving forward. Or no, it will still be incorporated, but it will not be the crux. It will be a supplement used within. And I think that the teachers felt that this was best for the kids, to focus more on the text but to supplement with Agile Minds when needed and when appropriate. Okay.
Can I ask a question on this?
Yes.
Can somebody remind me, how does Bridges fit in with Explorer and Quest? Is it all?
Bridges is based on level eight through five. So I think because it's new this year in fifth grade, I think they're going to be dabbling with it a bit in Explorer. At this time, it's not going to use the Quest, Bridges curriculum. They're all, Bridges is just getting five by the time that the Quest students start at fifth grade, they are gone through fifth grade curriculum at Yale University.
And how about Explorer? Does it apply to Explorer?
Explorer will be using some of the Bridges curriculum, and they're going to be kind of blended for an Explorer or a Columbia more like this. So because Bridges is branding this year in fifth grade, we'll see how it works with Explorer, but we're making sure that they have access to materials and ordering for, if you teach more or less, we're going to have Bridges materials. And they'll have the professional curriculum that goes on with that.
As an incoming fifth grader?
As an incoming fifth grader.
Is that your question, Rick?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And speaking of which, then our next topic of discussion was enrichment, Explorer, and Quest update. So I may be answering your question here. The third and fourth grade Explore Math will use Bridges three, four, or five, a combo therein. Placement at the elementary level has little wiggle room at this point. The daily replacement program may cause gaps, which is why the wiggle room has been modified. The program does grow for Explorer and Quest in sixth and seventh and eighth grade. There has been perhaps a feeling in the past that if you were not in a certain level by the time you hit fifth grade, that you were never to move. And I can certainly tell you that children do move and will continue to move within sixth, seventh, and eighth grade.
How does that work? I'm just trying to understand, based on what you just said and what Lori just said, in fifth grade, if you're in Quest, you're doing sixth-grade work, how is it that you're not shut out? How does a kid catch up? I don't understand how it works.
Well, for our kids that are moving to the last gen.
Dr. Wilcox, could you go to the podium?
Sir.
You may just want to stay there.
Sure. I apologize. Anyway.
Okay, thank you. I think the best visual that seems to make a lot of sense to people is we start out in kindergarten with enrichment, K1 and 2, so you kind of hit your, we're kind of, it's very needs-based and informal, based on kids that need some advancement to keep growing. Our goal, that growth notion, it's growth for all. We want all kids to be growing regardless of where they're entering. So we collect data, and when kids need something more and different, we enrich them. But when we have this daily replacement program in third and fourth and fifth grade, the funnel kind of narrows, because if you're going to take kids off-level, you really want to make sure that you don't create gaps. So we really want to, if we're going to have kids in a daily replacement program outside the scope of the core curriculum, we want to make sure they really need it. Performance is not the key driver at that time. We look at some other factors around aptitude and the way that they're thinking. When you move up into sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, performance becomes the main driver, because that's what matters in high school. It's all about performance. So for those kids that are working really hard, sixth, seventh, and into eighth grade, if they can handle more rigorous curriculum, we want them to have access to that. So I can tell you with absolute certainty that the group, and the lovely thing about seventh and eighth is they have the same teacher that loops up with them. So seventh-grade teachers, if they feel like there's a group of kids that can move to Quest this year, I believe we have eight or nine moving into Quest Math, and the same for Quest LA. So what they do is they give, now, the curriculum is off-level, so for those kids to make the move, they do have to close that gap. So the kids that are moving from seventh-grade Quest Math to eighth-grade Quest Math are watching flip videos all summer. They're making a really significant commitment to do this learning on their own, and they will have to take an exam and work with the teacher and show that they've mastered that curriculum in order to move in. Now, they have ample opportunities to math, it's not if you don't get the mark today, but basically, their teacher met with them and shared with the parents, here's the learning that needs to take place over the summer if you want to make this move. And so there's more ownership and responsibility and onus on the part of the kids at that point. And again, that's more of a high school model, as far as performance. You're going to have to do the work if you want to be working at that higher level. Does that make sense?
Yes, generally. And did you also say Core and Explorer, are they sort of being blended together?
Core and Explorer, what we know in all the conversations, this year, working with math, our focus was really on Core, but we had a lot of conversations about Explorer. And one of the conversations that came up was just the, how important it is to try to keep the curriculum as parallel as possible, so that if a student does need something more and different in order to grow, if you're off-sequence, it can make a shift really difficult. But if we can keep them more in line and more similar, then we can have kids go where they need to be in order to grow, and it doesn't, something we've done as adults doesn't impede the opportunity to get them into a place where they can have the access to that higher-level curriculum. So they're looking at aligning, and that'll be a beautiful thing about Atlas when we get the curriculum mapped out. You'll see, here's what happens in Core. It also happens in Explorer, and Explorer might just go a little bit deeper. So again, if you made that jump, you would see what needed to be covered in order to be prepared to be successful in Explorer. And similarly with Quest. And here's what it looks like in Quest. Again, what's the gap? So we would know what would need to be covered in order for a student to, we never want to put a student into a place where we know there's going to be a significant gap because they've missed core curriculum.
Thank you so much, Dr. Wilcox. Very well explained, clear. Okay, in addition, the committee did review the curriculum for Core, Explorer, and Quest Math tracks in middle school. And we were reminded that there will be a high value on local assessment, meaning our MAP and NWEA tests, especially during this transition while Common Core is changing the tests that we are taking. There was no public participation, and we did adjourn at 11:35. And our next meeting will take place at West Campus, Tuesday, September 16, at 8:15 a.m. And I know, Mr. Borkowski, you had requested to see the minutes from this. There were no additional handouts. So I'll email these to you.
One other education question, and I don't know where else to ask it. I read today about the state making ACT optional. Where are we on the PARK? Are we, are our kids taking the PARK this year? Is that?
Thank you, Ms. Fagel.
Now that the Illinois State Budget has been approved, they're finally finalizing some plans. So students in grades three through eight will be required to take the PARK summative assessment, which is comprised of two parts, what they call a performance-based assessment, three-quarters of the way through the year, so around March, and an end-of-year assessment that takes place 90% of the way through the school year. Our district will be utilizing the opportunity to take the tests online. Districts that are not equipped to do that will have the opportunity to use paper and pencil. The budget did not allow for grades nine, 10, and 11 PARK testing, and so right now, the directive has been given to high schools that students who are in courses aligned with Algebra II or English III, junior-level English, will take the PARK. So that still has some problems with determining which students, but for District 67, all students, grades three through eight, will take the PARK exam. The formative assessment opportunities that would actually make a lot of sense in terms of getting feedback earlier in the year for our kids and our teachers, those aren't ready for 2014-15. And those will be available, they say, in '15-16 for a cost. So at that time, we'll have to really look at that versus MAP and make a decision in terms of what's best for our kids, and always with an eye towards avoiding over-testing.
So we're, this upcoming year, we're doing MAP as well?
Correct. Because the formative assessments are not available for PARK.
So how many days of testing will the PARK require? Because it sounds like they'll be doing something in March, and then maybe something again in May, and then, of course, we have MAP in September and again in May. So it just sounds like a lot of days where our kids are going to be assessed as opposed to learning.
So it varies for students. The amount of time increases as the grade levels go higher, and it's in two subject areas, English Language Arts and Math. And it's anywhere from six to 10 hours of testing over the course of several days. So it's, there has been a lot of pushback on that from districts all over our state and other PARK states. The other major consortium in the country, Smarter Balanced, they do have a slightly shorter assessment. You know, it's, there's still a lot of uncertainty and skepticism about all of this coming to fruition. There's a lot of watching and waiting, and that's why we keep our emphasis. I consistently send the message to our teachers that we keep our eyes on the prize, which is our students and our community. They each only get one chance to go through each grade level. We're not going to put so much emphasis on something that might happen. We have a long, long history using MAP. We have longitudinal data. Our families, our teachers, and our students are accustomed to it, so we're going to keep our emphasis there, and then the rest will just kind of go with the flow.
Remind us, we don't have to take PARK, right?
We do.
Oh, we are obligated. I lost track of it.
We do.
We do.
So PARK is replacing ISAT.
Oh, yeah.
So.
So it's not optional.
The formative assessments that are optional, which are not even ready for next year, but the summative are required of all public school districts in Illinois. Correct. ISAT is now done. We're just getting our scores in from this last spring, and so those will be reported to you in the fall.
And both the 75% and the 90% assessments are required?
Yes.
And Mike, I don't know if you have a sense for this. I don't know, as I understand, there was a large number of superintendents who wrote a letter or something to the Illinois School Board. I'm not sure if we were part of that, if we were not. Is that fight ongoing, for lack of a better word, or do you see this sort of a done deal for now?
It's a done deal for now. Essentially, the letter was received with a "thank you very much," it's interesting, and with a, I'll call it pro forma response. And so for this year, with the approval of the budget, the matter is essentially settled. There remain a large number of really significant questions, and Mrs. Clemmensen pointed out, one of the most significant ones, particularly for high school, is the very substantial amount of time that high school students are going to be tested. And there are a number of issues with the reliability of the test, the consistency of the cohort groups that they will be assessing, and the willingness, in particular in high SES communities, for students to participate in something that has absolutely no discernible impact on their college acceptance. So with ACT, even though it was a very flawed instrument in a number of ways, it was the best thing that we had, and there was real skin in the game from students. And with the move away from that, there are any number of really significant challenges. And a final one, I would say, is in terms of learning, the most productive of the assessments that we're going to give would be the formative assessments, which are not yet ready. So students actually learn the most from something that is not a high-stakes test, and that would, at the high school level, that would be an additional chunk adding to an already very large palette of testing time. And same for the elementary and middle school, but it does lessen, the amount of testing does lessen in those grades. But there are a number of real challenges. Anything to add to that, Mrs. Fagel?
The one area that I would say, the area superintendents, you know, in their efforts, they did get action as a result, was that they really pushed hard for the state to continue to fund an ACT for juniors. And that is taking place on March 3. There will be an ACT plus writing as an option for public high schools in the state. Of course, our community high school will take advantage of that. That's a great opportunity for our students. The Work Keys is also optional, provided at no cost to districts. Our district at the high school level will not participate in that. And that was a direct result of the lobbying on the part of area superintendents.
It's a very good point. One of the things that superintendents were most worked up about was the ACT was administered but without writing. In effect, that was a perfunctory exercise for students, because it couldn't be counted without the writing. So now this is a legitimate, full ACT that will be administered, and that, while it's not exactly what anybody would have wanted, it certainly is better than what we had in the past, and also something that is useful. The ACT is, and talking to Steve Cordigan today, the data guy, he's very clear that the ACT is the best predictor that we have of future college performance. College preparation, likelihood of success at college, that's the best current instrument that we have. Park-- PARK is good in many ways, but it's untested. And there's just a lot of learning that has to go on there.
So do you anticipate, still, the vast majority of our high school students will be taking the ACT?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, we will offer it on March 3rd, and I would be shocked if anything less than 100% of our students took advantage of it. But it's no longer a graduation requirement. There's no makeup day. There's no, there's a lot less pressure for the school, for the students, because it includes the writing. It will now be useful to them for all college applications versus some that, you know, wanted the writing and that. So most of our students take the ACT many times. But for schools that are, have a high rate of low SES students, this was really, really important. And so I'm glad for all students in Illinois that the state is continuing to fund this.
So will they also be required to take a PARK exam?
Yes.
Okay.
Not all juniors. Only those enrolled in courses that address the Algebra II standards or the English III standards. And that's where there's still some clarification that we're waiting on. I mean, it's, it's laughable at this point that districts are holding off on testing plans, calendaring, you know, mid-July. And so all of my colleagues in surrounding districts, we've all taken the same approach, which is stay focused on what works for our students, local assessments that our teachers develop or we use and we know with our students. The rest, we'll take it as it comes. But we don't want our kids to lose out in the middle of this very messy transition in standardized testing.
Thank you so much, Ms. Fagel. All right, we're going to move on now to the Board Finance and Operations Committee. Mr. Schuler?
Thank you. The Finance and Operations Committee also met in July on the 8th. Consisted of the usual suspects, along with Elizabeth Hennessy from William Blair. The primary discussion was led by Ms. Hennessy, dealing with the opportunity for refinancing of the 2004 and 2005 debt certificates. That'll actually be an opportunity in January of 2015 on the call date. The 2004 debt certificates total $4.5 million. The 2005 debt certificates, $2.8 million. They can be repriced as of January 1, and as of today, where interest rates are, or I should say, as of July 8, the potential savings were about $500,000. So not insignificant. The present value happens to be about $500,000 as well, because there's no time value of money, given where interest rates are. Due to the Dodd-Frank bill, it was also necessary to approve the pre-engagement letter allowing William Blair to serve as both our financial advisor and underwriter. You'll recall, we approved that at the last board meeting. The point of this was, it saves time and fees. And given our confidence in long history with William Blair, there was no concern about that. That said, we did have a discussion, and we will monitor William Blair's analysis and suggestion for the refinancing and the rates that they come up with. Comps will be looked at by Jennifer and Alan. The second topic was summer projects, primarily concerning at Everett, the asbestos removal and the tile replacement, which is completed, and also the pavement work, which will be done in July and August, that's at Sheridan and DPM. Third major topic was the budget itself. At the very highest level, I'd just like to give you the revenues. For the 2014-15 year, are $35.5 million, just to give everybody a sense of it. Expenses are virtually the same at $35.3 million, with a projected net surplus for that fiscal year of about $150,000 or $200,000. So what does that mean? That means, that's a good thing. We're not running a deficit. We did for a couple of years back in the leaner years. Right now, we're back to a surplus, albeit smaller. But given our overall surplus, that's kind of where we want to be. Well, I will highlight, that's the big picture, but there are variables that will have an impact, one way or the other, that are difficult to, impossible to project. Jennifer and Alan, updated on an ongoing basis. Some of the biggest variables that have an impact on the surplus are, number one, a change over time in the state revenues and the requirements for pension sharing, the costs of the pension, and who, and how much we share in that. The expectation is that state revenues will decline, and our requirement for sharing in the pension costs will increase over time. Estimates for that are phased in each year, over the five-year budget and thereafter. The second large variable in the budget, projected enrollment, that of course has a big impact, because salaries constitute 75% to 80% of our costs. In 2013-2014, the enrollment was 1,009,13. That declined by 42 students to 1,875 for 2014 and '15. To put it in more perspective, we've lost 229 students in the last five years. That translates into, of course, number of teachers, and that's, has a big impact on the cost side. How that trend continues, does it flatten? Does it go back up? We can ask Jeff about housing trends and things like that, but that will have also a big impact over the next five years. Third large variable is what will be the final number for life safety required improvements? We have not yet heard from the state, have we? Jennifer or Alan? I, we still haven't heard. So that, you know, that's potentially, you know, could revolve around $1 million plus or minus, so that's a big variable. And one last big variable, our planned initiatives and the timing of planned initiatives. For that, we thank Lori and Lauren for their input. And it's yet another example of how the Education Committee and the operations and the finance all tie together. In, in this particular meeting, we did discuss, and we all appreciated hearing about the latest initiatives on the instructional side. One being the addition of more math specialists. The Education Committee is more aware of this, but for us, it was even better to hear it. We're looking at adding three more for a total of six, but incrementally, three more. And more of an aside, it was interesting to hear how we're moving from more of a coaching philosophy to an intervention philosophy. On the reading/writing side, we pay for new curriculum and one new specialist, bringing the specialist to a total of eight. STEM and inquiry, there will be more incremental costs on that. A new smart lab at DPM West is already budgeted. I think that's $180,000. The discussion was, we would, is that right?
The DPM East is next year. Yeah, DPM West is next year. Right? Yeah, well, ours, okay.
That's what I'm trying to say. DPM West is scheduled, and we had a discussion of having a second one at DPM East. And from our perspective, we said, you know, regardless of $180,000, once it's tested, and if it's, if everybody seems to like it, we would like to push up the one for DP, DPM East. Why wait? If we like it, let's get it in there. I think that was encouraging for the education side to hear.
Very exciting.
So you have our blessing. In fact, we're pushing, we're pushing.
Wonderful.
Great. The inspiration block was discussed, and also the addition of two emotional workers, social-emotional workers in both the West and East wings. Social and emotional, not just emotional.
Rick, just so I'm clear, and I don't know if it's for Alan or Lauren, so the 7'8" STEM lab is going in in August, and the 5'6" STEM lab is scheduled to go in in December. Is that right?
So after that meeting, we followed up with Renee, Tom, and Judy Epke, and we all agreed that we want to be thoughtful about the planning and make sure that the space we choose and the course we choose, and most importantly, that we're ensuring an experience for students that varies enough. And so taking all those things into consideration, we were, we were hoping for a December, optimally it would be winter break, installation on the East side, for students to begin taking advantage of it in January.
Budget difference.
Correct.
And, you know, we expect to learn something from the first one that we can apply to the second one.
Absolutely.
So I do like, or we all like, the idea of staggering it.
Yeah.
But without a big delay.
Yeah, we don't want to rush, but we all feel very confident that we won't be disappointed.
Unless there are any questions, that's all I have to say.
I just had a question about enrollment. Is that a final number? I know last year, the enrollment was projected to be lower than it actually turned out. We wound up having a lot of folks joining the school district over the summer. Are we expected to see the same kind of trend this year? Are we feeling like, you know, 1,875 is where we're approximately going to be?
As my grandfather used to say, it's not over till it's over, right? So there'll certainly be change.
We're, right now, still using projected enrollment numbers for 14-15. I mean, I know we still continue to get numbers. We actually added a section, the half-day section of kindergarten as of this morning. So we are still watching some of those things. And that really is probably the biggest variable, is our incoming kindergarten. And we also pick up a ton between kindergarten and first grade, so we're kind of watching those numbers as well. But right now, it's still based off projected numbers. We've, we've had declining enrollment every single year since '06-'07, even though, yes, last year was less than. We had projected, it was still a decline. We're actually down 382 since '06-'07. The year I arrived, I'm sure it's a coincidence, but we are down 382 since that time.
In accordance with the policy that we passed two months ago relative to the fund balance, what's our aggregate fund balance percentage as of the end of the fiscal year?
I did not calculate it, but the actual surplus, first of all, it's projected, and it's only $159,000, so it's a bit of a rounding error. Are you asking, where did we end last year?
Yeah, the, the policy was to take a calculation on June 30th as to what the actual expenditures were versus what our overall fund balance was, and look at that as a percentage. And I'm just curious.
Yes.
Do we know where that ended up, and if that between 10% and 15%?
In your board packet, in the financials, there's a page that's labeled the 2013-14 fund balances summary as of 6/30/2014. And there's a footnote.
It's on the computer as well. If you click on... Do you know what the number is?
Yes. Last year, we started with a fund balance of $5.4 million. The packet shows an ending balance of $7.6. Now, that will come down some, because we don't have all the procurement card things posted, but it was a substantial increase. Now, I want to talk about that then for a moment. When we adopted the budget last year, we projected the fund balance to grow by $1.3 million, in part because we still had held off on some capital projects. And I'll talk about that as we go into next year's budget and I give the presentation. So when, when you adopted the budget last year, we had projected that the fund balance would grow by $1.3 million. It's actually going to grow by about $2 million. So that delta, that difference of $700,000, more than half of that is coming in the special ed tuition line. And then the other couple hundred thousand is just spread out across, you know, revenues came in $15,000 higher here, $10,000 there, and expenses came in a little under in various line items. So we feel really good about, you know, the projected budgets and where we landed with various things. Special ed tends to be a very volatile area to project. So some years, we win, some years, we lose. But the fund balance went up, and then according to the policy in September, what we will do, set a finance meeting, we will incorporate the budget and roll out the five-year projection, and then address the questions that the policy asks us to address.
So based on what I'm looking at, does that say that we ended the year with a aggregate fund balance percentage of 20, almost 22%?
Correct.
21.8%? Is that right?
Yeah. Because you divide it by roughly $35 million.
Yeah, right.
Yep.
Okay. So then in September, we'll talk about how we're going to address the overage and what drove that and all that fun stuff.
Exactly.
Okay.
September's the month, and that's where it'll be nice to talk about more of these educational initiatives and capital expenditures and...
Great.
...life safety. We'll have more numbers on those.
Perfect. Thank you.
I don't know if you're able to address this, Alan, but from what the inference from what you just said, is it because our special education payments out are less this upcoming year that we have this additional money?
No, for the year that just ended, we didn't spend as much as, as we had budgeted.
Was less.
It was, it was significantly less.
And that's because of less payments with students going to separate places to be educated?
I think it's a combination of things. It's that, it's some, I believe, teacher aides from, that we brought in-house from an SSCD that helped us underspend, and then in our salary line, we were able to absorb that to our benefit.
I'd like to add that this is a good problem to have, that we're up to 22%. I love it. Mike and Lori and Lauren should all be very pleased to have that, and this gives us room for what I call both hard and soft costs, you know, and the physical property, the labs, and, you know, the teachers, the specialists. This gives us room to play with, so, but, and that'll have to be presented in September. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments for Rick or other members of the Finance and Operations Committee? Seeing none, we will move on to the Policy Committee. Mike Warkowski?
Policy Committee has not met since our last board meeting. We need to meet soon. Eileen has told me that there's another press package, so I'm sure we'll have a report at the next meeting.
Thank you. We'll look forward to your report. Compens...
As always.
That's correct.
Bated breath.
Compensation Committee, Mr. Lemke?
To everyone's surprise, the Compensation Committee did not meet.
Another one we will look forward to hearing from soon. As we move on to liaison reports, the Norris Suburban Special Education District, NSSCD, Mr. Warkowski?
NSSCD Board has not met since our last board meeting. It meets next on August 27th.
Thank you. Illinois Association of School Boards, EdRed, Mr. Anderson, there has, was no report given by Mr. Anderson. The Curriculum Coordinating Committee, Spirit of 67 Foundation, and APT Meeting, all did not meet in the prior month, all reported by myself. And I look forward to reporting in September on these meetings, when these groups reconvene. One change to remind the Board of is our executive APT meetings. We have agreed upon the fact that we are going to rotate meetings this year, just for a variety of reasons that we've discussed in the past, and I want to make sure everyone's on board with that. And I'll be sending out an email shortly to get a gauge of when you are available. Okay? All right. Any other liaison reports? Seeing none, we are going to move on to action items. First, we're going to go to the adoption of the resolution to display the tentative budget. Mr. Alvis and Mrs. Hermes.
This presentation was one of the main topics of discussion at the Finance and Operations Committee meeting that was held on July 17.
Committee meeting that was held on July 8th. And there will be four components to it. The first will be a review of the legal requirements for budget adoption. In other words, why are we presenting it tonight, and by when do we have to adopt a budget, and what steps do we have to go through? Second one, we'll talk about some very high-arcing budget assumptions, how we approach it. We'll address things that Mr. Shuler has already touched on, pension cost shift, SB16. We'll go over a summary of the revenues and expenses. I'll touch a little bit more, based on the earlier discussion on fund balance, a couple more comments on that. And then, we will go through and talk about some of the budget highlights, both on the instructional side and on the facility side.
Just some of the mechanics of the budget. We are required to adopt a budget by the end of our first quarter of our fiscal year. Our year does run July to June, so we do have to adopt a budget by the end of September. But prior to doing so, and the reason that we're having this meeting tonight is, well, we're having a meeting for other reasons, but the reason we're having this presentation tonight, is we must adopt a resolution to place the tentative budget on display for at least 30 days. And I'll give you the visual on that. We actually prepare the budget in two forms. We do have the state form, so you'll see that at your place tonight, which is the exact required form from the State Board of Education. We also do an in-district format that we call kind of our budget book, which does slice the data in just a little bit of a different way. As Alan mentioned, we have not finished posting quite everything yet from our last fiscal year, so there will be an adjustment on the state form when we do the final, because that does include cash on hand and fund balance numbers. So, there'll be a slight tweak to that once we finish posting. We also are required to schedule a date and time for a public hearing of the budget, as the Board does not meet formally in August. Our tentative hearing will be on September 23rd for that approval, and we are required to publish in a newspaper of general circulation, some old-school language here, notice of that public hearing, but we also do make that available on our website. Anyone in the community that would like to come in and view our budget is welcome to do so. They would just come to the district office and could review any of the documents that I referred to earlier.
Some of the assumptions that we use in building the budget. On the revenue side, revenue falls into three main categories. Local revenue is primarily made up of property taxes, and once the levy is done and the extensions come out in the spring, it's just a matter of how much the collection rate will be. And in Lake County, it's almost 100%. So, that's fairly easy to do. Other things, like interest earnings, we look at prior year, we look at trends in the market, if rates are going up or going down, and make adjustments there. On the state level, you'll see I have a bullet there that says FY14 prorated levels maintained. Earlier today, Mrs. Clemmenson sent an email and asked, "Why did we see a decrease in state and federal revenue?" And that would seem contradictory to that bullet, but they're really not, because in last year's budget, we actually received, in some cases, five state payments, and now that the state has caught up, we've made that adjustment to go to four. So, we've made the assumption to stay at the same proration levels as last year, and, but then had to account for that fifth payment not being there, which is the primary reason why, why if you look in the book that Jennifer referenced, you'll see a drop, as Mrs. Clemmenson had. SB16, which was passed and then challenged in court, as we were building the budget, that was the law, but then the injunction came, so that is not included in here. And the pension cost shift, which we've talked about numerous times over the last year or so, we have not included in this budget, because for that really to take place, I mean theoretically, the legislature could come back in November and pass it and make it retroactive, or make it start on January 1. I think that's highly unlikely that they would do that. So, because they didn't take action on that in May, we did not build that into this year's budget. But when we meet in September and go through our five-year projection, we do still include that. We believe something is going to change, whether it's the funding mechanism for state revenue or the pension cost shift. I don't, I personally don't believe both will occur, but I think one of them will occur. And we can, you know, we can flip a coin and pick which one we want to work off of. But tonight, we're talking about the FY15 budget, and again, so you know, the SB16 and the pension cost shift are not included, and I think it's very unlikely that that would occur during this year. The federal level, federal revenue is a very small part of our budget. All federal revenue is either vocational or special ed, and that's based on prior year expenses and grant allocations.
All right, expenditures. Salary and benefits, by far and large, are our greatest expense. Our money is invested, you know, in our labor, in our staffing. We do take a look at that projected enrollment, and I think I've stood up here before and said, "Okay, I have a couple of classes that are on the bubble, that we're watching. A few more kids in a few specific classes at a specific school might tip us over." This morning, prior to where we ended, I would have said that about kindergarten, that did eventually, look at the numbers today and did tip. But overall, I think we feel really good about where some of the other numbers are. There is some room for growth related to enrollment. If we were to get, you know, three more fourth graders at Everett, we don't see that there's a lot of classes sitting on the bubble, which is a really good place to be. So, we do look at the projected enrollment and staffing that correlates to that. Take a look at the negotiated agreements. We do have contracts in place for both the LFEA and the SEIU, which covers the majority of our staff. Those individual expenses are done by individual, so I have every single name of every single employee, and I know, you know, what their educational experience is, how many years they've been in the district, you know, are they moving, is there an available step in lane for them to move to? We take a look at what we know people have put in for lane changes, so did they get an educational advancement during the year? Have they submitted that they think they may hit one before the start of school? And we try to include those, as much of that as we possibly can. At the time that we put this budget together, or finished this budget for, that's, I think, July 8th or 7th, whatever that date was, Finance Committee meeting, we had 16 and a half open certified positions, which is a large number of positions at that time of the year. We have monitored it since. I know that there's a huge group being hired tonight, so we've tried to kind of balance those, and I've taken a look, how far did they vary from where I had projected that they might be? I mean, I kind of look at trends, kind of look at our hiring history, and make an assumption about where I think a new hire might come. And right now, we're right in range of that. Some are high, some are lower, but overall, as an average, we're in a pretty good spot. We do the same thing in regards to the benefit costs that you see on there. Obviously, we know what our individual plans and premiums are going up, but we also have an open enrollment that occurs in May and June. In addition, all of those new hires may elect to take health insurance, and they may not. They may take family, they may take single. So, we have some assumptions around that as well. We did have 22, I received this information this morning, 22 changes with our existing staff through open enrollment, so people electing different plans or just making changes. 14 of them went, that changed to a lower-cost plan, and the remaining chose a more expensive plan. So, again, it's just balancing those out going forward. We will keep track of this. We call it Round Two in the business office. So, any changes that come in, either on the hiring of new staff, or people electing different insurance plans, or maybe a lane change that we didn't anticipate, we kind of collect that data in one spot, and we will make a determination coming into September, were there enough changes that occurred, either on the plus or the minus, that's going to greatly swing the budget that we have on display? And if it's, we win some, we lose some, but really, we're ending up that our budget is in a really solid spot, and there's not that much variance, most likely, we wouldn't recommend a change prior to adopting that budget in September. If we do have a wide variance coming in, like, you know, perhaps every single new person took full-boat family insurance, which I wouldn't have projected, because it's different than the trend, maybe that's enough, excuse me, enough of a difference that we may make a recommendation to adjust that budget number. We can make an adjustment to this tentative budget up until the time the Board adopts it as final, on September 23rd. Salary recommendations are just anybody that wasn't covered under a current collective bargaining agreement, and the Board took action on those in June, so those would have been included as well. For the remaining budget items, purchase services, supplies, capital outlay, other, and tuition, really, these come from a variety of sources. Every principal will work with their staff, and they do present a building budget. Every department has the same responsibility, technology, buildings and grounds, the business office, curriculum, special ed, and primarily, these are where those numbers come from. We also look at, what are the historical numbers, what are the trends, what do we know utilities, you know, what's happening in the world of utilities, those type of factors. We add in the planned initiatives, which we will hit when we do some of the budget highlights later, and then, to some extent, revenue stream. And that really has to do with some of the capital projects. How many things, one, can we handle project-wise, but also, two, what can we do revenue-stream-wise, which may affect us going forward? As Alan mentioned, the tuition earlier in our discussion, that is a huge variable. It's very student-specific, the special education tuition. There are years where I will stand up and tell you, you know, we blew the tuition line by half a million dollars, because we had placements that, you know, needed to change, or we had kids coming in and out of programs, or we had a new enrollee that had a placement that we didn't even, could imagine that we would get. This year, it happened to swing the other way, and we came in under budget. But, that is something that we work really hard with special ed, and trying to count what we actually know. And then, trend-wise, do we usually see one additional student needing a placement? Is there two? And how much of a cushion do you build in, or do you build no cushion? And then, just try to see, you know, do we win or lose on that particular issue? So, that is a huge variable expense that we make the best assumptions on.
As Mr. Shuler talked about earlier, this is a summary then of the budget. You can see the revenues of $35,467.87, and expenses of $35,301.062, net of any transfers. In either case, including transfers or without transfers, the difference between revenues and expenses is a positive $159,725. So, now, that's different than what we talked about on July 8th, because of the inclusion now of that second lab in there. I do want to point out, though, a little bit, because, given our earlier discussion, last year's budget had anticipated revenues exceeding expenses by 1.3 million, and this year's budget drops it down to 159,000. So, that could raise flags. But, if you look at the capital projects budget here, the expenses of 1.3 million, last year, the capital projects budget was about 409,000. And, to the Board members who were elected last year, if you remember, we sat in this room during your orientation, and we talked about, for several years, we had held off on capital projects because of what had gone on with the economy. We needed to spend time last year, kind of beefing that plan up. We're still waiting to hear on the life safety costs, but some of that work, we rolled out a new format, we identified some projects, and a big, big piece of that work this year was the abatement, replacement of all the flooring at Everett School. We're doing the Deer Path black topping, the Sheridan black topping. So, that surplus last year was a little bit artificial, in the fact that we consciously held back for several years. Projects don't go away, and they're there. And so, that's why that gap closed so much, and then some of the staffing that we've added, that we're going to touch on here, some of the other things going on, that's why it's gotten much tighter.
Can you confirm that life safety costs are not zero in here? Your best estimate is in here, is it not?
No, they're not in here now.
You have none in there?
Because what'll happen is sometime this fall, and I hope before our September meeting, we'll get the estimate from the architect.
Right.
But that work won't really start until next June, so it'll really impact next year's budget.
Oh, okay.
And that will impact, it'll impact the five-year projection first.
But isn't it in the five-year projection, an estimate of it? Or do you actually have zero in the five-year?
I have to go, you know, we have that capital projects plan, I'd have to go back and look at that right now.
Well, it's not in this year's budget, so, never mind.
So, you don't have numbers, but did you get the results of life safety since we met?
No, they've done the walkthrough, and they, as architects now, go back and look where we're out of compliance, and then they'll start costing those things out, and then we'll build schedules off of that. The floor abatement...
That's a big number, I mean, that's...
It could be.
It could be. I mean, I hope it's not too big, but...
You know, I want to be optimistic in the fact that I think we do a pretty good job maintaining our infrastructure, but yeah, codes change, and, you know, if we have to replace a lot of doors, doors are expensive. Every 10 years, you have to have an architect walk through your building and do a certification. Irrespective, though, of the life safety, what we embarked on this year at Everett with the replacing of the abating and the replacing of the carpet that's 15, 16 years old, we need to do a Sheridan, we need to do a Cherokee. Now, Carol White did a really nice job this year of planning this out and scheduling it, and we got lucky, in the sense that we had no concrete issues at Everett. What I mean by that is, when you abate, sometimes you can, it can be crumbling, and you have a lot of repair work, or you have too much moisture in there. That wasn't the case, and we have no administrators at Everett right now, because the building's empty, but if you get a chance, stop by. The flooring there looks really spectacular. It really enhances the environment, and I think you're going to be proud and pleased with what we do. And we're anxious to get going on the other two schools, so we're going to, we would like to talk in September about tackling both of those next summer, but then it comes down to the, you know, the cost and what the impact on the budget, and we'll have those discussions. But I did want to point that out, given the earlier conversation. So, again, you know, in one year, this line went from about 400,000 up to 1,369,538, and we're going to see numbers like that or higher the next couple of years.
Could you clarify, first, a compliment to both Mr. Alvis and Mrs. White. Everett is stunningly terrific-looking, and if you get a chance to go over there, it's a combination of the colors, the materials used, it's very warm, and is such a significant improvement. It's really remarkable. The second thing, could you clarify where we are in the life safety process and the timeline associated with that process?
Okay, so, we were due for the life safety survey this year. So, the architect and their team came through, I think, late spring, and they walked through all the buildings, and they identify projects. Then, they retreat back to their offices, and they check codes, and they cost out and give us cost estimates on projects, and they bring that back to us. I hope to get that information to incorporate into our September meeting, so we get ballpark costs. And then, from there, we'll build, in that five-year projection, schedules of when to complete that work.
I think that's, maybe that's part of the answer, is when we get that report back, they will give us timelines, like, these are particular things that must be completed within one year, these are things that must be completed within three years, five years, and just the 10 years. So, then, with that schedule and our five-year plan, we can lay out exactly how the projects will fall.
So, you've not, we've not received anything yet that says, "We know you need to address these issues. We'll get back to you with cost and timelines later." At this stage, we still don't have anything as an output of the survey that was done?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so, we're going to move on to the budget highlights. Again, we went over a lot of these in the Finance and Ops Committee, the Education Report, I think, touched on them as well, and we're going to start on the instructional side first.
We've talked about our math specialists. I know this is something we talked about all year, and we feel really excited about the team of math specialists that'll be serving the district. Three of these people worked in this capacity this past year. One of those was Nikki Hanneman. She was our coach at all three buildings this year. She will be the specialist at Sheridan School, and we were really fortunate to get two other stellar classroom teachers who eagerly stepped up as candidates and were granted positions to be the math specialists at Cherokee and also at Everett, and those teachers are Katie Lambert and Jessica Volpe, all three fantastic teachers, and I know they're going to do great work in those buildings. At DPM last year, we had Deb Smith working as a coach, and Joan Fletcher working as an interventionist. They accomplished so much work at... They accomplished so much work at DPM, we want them to keep going with that work. And we ended up hiring Laura McDowell to be the part of that trio. So, she'll be the math specialist. All three of them will be working across 5'8" to provide direct service to students and also work with adults. We talked about 5th grade bridges. This is a large number, but it's really making sure that we have all materials for those students in Core and Explore. We're going to have the teaching materials, the manipulatives for the classrooms, and also some professional development. That number might be a little bit high, but again, we wanted to make sure that we can get them whatever they need to really fully implement this, the way that we did at elementary, which was so successful. We spent the year, again, I talked about this, working with the math curriculum, really talking about, you know, how we make it work with AgileMind. And that was something that was problematic, the scaffolding in 5th grade was really problematic. We feel really strong, we're going to continue our foundation with bridges in 5th. 6th grade is going to be that year where they still use a lot of AgileMind and blend 6th and 7th grade Common Core math for our students. But 7th and 8th grade, after, you know, really trying to work with AgileMind, they felt like for both their Core and Explore students, they wanted, for the students that needed it, they wanted more practice. There were elements of AgileMind that were really appealing to them, this idea of starting with a really big, real-life problem, and they found a 2015 text, a 9th grade Algebra I text, that starts the same way. It's got an online textbook, it's just got a wide range of materials to engage a wide range of students and give them a full algebra experience. They plan on using this textbook as a base with Core and Explore students, and it's possible that Quest will be, you know, they'll get access to this text as well. We're rolling it out with, we're still in the process of deciding what we're going to purchase for next year, but we know we want this to be kind of the skeletal base for algebra for all students that are, and again, that encompasses our whole group. Our goal remains to get kids through Algebra I before they leave DPM.
Quick question for you.
Sure.
You're calling these big expenses, the 30,000 for bridges, 30,000 for new algebra curriculum?
Yeah.
Is that one-time? Or is that every year, ongoing?
Yeah, it would certainly not. I mean, the first time we make the purchase, it's going to be the most expensive. For instance, with bridges, we have to purchase the teacher's guides, all the classroom manipulatives. We're still uncertain on how many textbooks we're going to purchase with 7'8". We're still working on what that'll look like. We want to get an online license, so kids can access the book at home. But will we get a class set, or will we buy a book per student? We might kind of enter in and then have another expense next year. So, this was, we know we have significant expenses here, but whether or not it'll reach 30K and would it be that amount every year? Absolutely not. Does that help?
Sort of. So, it's closer to a one-time expense?
It's closer to a one-time expense. Yeah, it's closer to one, yes. The replacement cost with bridges, for instance, would be the consumable book that would be purchased every year, but that's a much more, that's a lower expense.
So, that's good.
It is good.
In my mind, it's not that big, then.
Yeah, it's an investment initially, and then, right.
If it's a one-time expense, it's not so bad.
Okay, good.
Hey, I'm sorry, Dr. Wilcox?
Oh.
Or Lauren, can you hear me? Just relative to the math specialists, I think that's great that we're able to put one theoretically in every building.
Right.
And this isn't the place to necessarily answer this question, but something to think about. Adding these to the mix, I would just like to know, at some point, how do we know that they're making a difference? And how do we, or how are we able to truly understand the impact that these positions are making and justifying, for lack of a better term, the expense?
And that's a question, I believe, that came up at the Finance Committee, which is, you know, that's, it's, I think, we already feel responsible for making sure that we have results, but it's always good to be reminded that, you know, what is the outcome going to be? We expect to see increased numbers of students in that northeast corner of the MAP data. So, kids who are not only achieving, but growing. And then, of course, lower numbers in the other quadrants that show lack of growth. And we also expect to see more students who are given the opportunity to perhaps access a more rigorous curriculum. So, like Lori was describing, making that move from Core to Explore or Explore to Quest, widening the funnel, making that opportunity more easy for them. We also will track number of students receiving interventions and look at those individual students and their growth, not only on MAP, but on local classroom assessments. So, a couple of different data points that we'll be watching to see the impact. And again, the specialist role is defined as primarily direct intervention with students, secondarily coaching for teachers. So, moving on with instructional highlights, last year, we began the exploration of adopting a new language arts literacy reading and writing curriculum. This is a multi-year process. It's not like it used to be, where you just order the Basil Reader and get all the boxes and unpack them, and then, teachers are ready to go. The ones that we are looking at are much more sophisticated, and they really involve extensive amounts of professional development and training for the teachers. Oops, I forgot about the clicker here. So, we will be coming to you, as we had planned on a timeline we presented last year in November, recommending what we're calling a Phase 1 of an adoption. So, when you're looking at reading and writing K8, we're going to chunk it out so that it's happening over the course of several years. The dollar amount there would incorporate materials and professional development. We added a reading specialist at DPM West, which rounds out our reading specialist staffing. Looking at the number of students who are not making adequate growth or not meeting standards in reading in grade 7 and 8 was a contributing factor to this decision. We feel that many of our students would still benefit from direct intervention beyond what they're getting from their classroom teacher. In the area of STEM inquiry, we're extremely excited about the addition of these Smart Labs. One thing we talked about at the Finance Committee was how this purchase feels good to all of us, because it's very visible and it's very, very much representative of everything that our new mission and vision encompasses. So, looking at these modules that students will participate in, they're hands-on, they're inquiry-based, they're real-world, they're student-directed, teacher is facilitating, literacy skills are incorporated, it's really, it's really exciting. And so, we hope to then speed up the adoption of that on the East Side as well. Our Inspiration Block planning is coming along really well. Implementation next year at Cherokee will be in kindergarten for full-day students, as well as all students in grades 3 and 4. A further update I gave at that meeting was just to remind the board that currently, the full-day kindergarten students enrolled in the Inspiration Block. We have an exact even split between students choosing the Language Acquisition or Mandarin Inspiration Block and the STEM Inquiry Inspiration Block. So, that's really, it's reassuring that this is a hard choice for parents, which is what we wanted. And I think that nice even split will even further our goal of reducing that divisiveness and bringing the community back together. And then, finally, in the area of response to intervention and special education, we did go through a comprehensive review by Dr. Elise Furtura. And this summer, we are working hard to basically go through that report, line by line, prioritize things that we need to do sooner rather than later, in terms of shoring up everything from our processes and procedures to our, what we call our Tier 1, our core teaching for all students. Because response to intervention and special education, all of that begins in the classroom with all students' general education. So, that is a big undertaking. And again, the dollar amount there would be for staff development related to those This was by far the most exciting part of the Finance and Ops Committee. And I'm not biased, I'm just saying.
Can you just clarify one thing? For the Inspiration Block and the Advanced Language Acquisition Block, the exact split is for incoming kindergarteners, correct? Thank you.
Somewhat related to that, and I don't know who this question's for, but Jen mentioned the kind of different classes that are on the bubble, and if there's going to be, need another section. As wonderful as I and others think the Inspiration Block is at Cherokee, there still are, as some of you know, some very unhappy families at Cherokee. And some of them have asked for permissive transfers and have been told, "You can go to Sheridan, but not Everett." When do we, so if there's sections, I heard Jen say that we're in a good shape, that a number of them are not on the bubble. When do we give those family respect? And if a section isn't going to go over and they want to go to Everett versus Sheridan, what does that timeline look like?
We can make calls, we will make calls, actually, tomorrow about Everett. The half kindergarten section was added at Everett, we posted that for today. The number's just tipped. So, we're basing it on incoming enrollees. If another, so, the other problematic grade that's really just at capacity at Everett is 2nd grade. So, right now, we cannot allow permissive transfers to Everett, because if we allow one, we literally have to hire another teacher, because we tip it over. If someone moves into the Everett boundaries in 2nd grade, we will have to add a third, a fourth, pardon me, a fourth teacher. And if we do that, then, these couple of people that have requested permissive transfers and are waiting, now, they were granted a permissive transfer to Sheridan, so that's where they are now, but for, you know, they specifically initially requested Everett. So, we're just watching it, and if it tips over again, like adjusted in kindergarten, we'll let them know. And then, as long as there's space, we can grant those permissive transfers.
There's, please, this is meant as a question. There's space now, we're just reserving the space in case people move in. Is that a T statement?
Right now, are you talking about 2nd grade? We're 22, 22, and 21. We have one spot. So, again, it's that, and it's very typical and very probable that one, two, or even three kids could move in over the course of the year. So, that also makes it a little bit difficult, because again, for the existing Everett families, if we grant these transfers and go just to capacity or over, and then, a new person moves in, now, they're sitting at, you know, 23 kids in a class. And it gets dicey when you grant permissive transfers and then, again, go over capacity. So, I think we're, that was the recommendation, just to, you know, again, if we get a move-in and we're at capacity, then, we'll go ahead and tip it.
In the spirit of Mike Semics representing those who are not in the room, the alternate perspective is that the 15 or 20 Everett families who have been granted permissive transfers to come to Cherokee for the Mandarin Block, an alternate perspective of those not in the room is that's a bit of a double standard.
I think they were, I think, again, they were all, I mean, part of the granting of the permissive transfers, it was always under the assumption and always worked within the boundaries of having room in these classrooms. None of those classrooms-
There's unlimited, there's unlimited permissive transfers from Everett to Cherokee.
For the Mandarin program, you're saying? For the program?
And I- From our understanding, it wasn't initially considered a permissive transfer, it was considered enrolling in a program in the district. And that's an important, that's an important difference. So, that's something that I think we need to further clarify. If we use the phrase "permissive transfer" to describe kids coming from Everett or Sheridan into Cherokee, then, you're correct, it's a double standard. But in the past, it hasn't been considered one. So, we need to clearly communicate that language in the definitions.
I was wondering, I was at the Finance Meeting. I thought you guys told us that the Smart Labs cost $180. And I understand we're having a second one now, but either, could you just explain what's in the 500K? Is there any salary in that? Is it all equipment? Maybe I'm remembering wrong.
Nope, you're remembering it correctly, but the, and those are two, two different things. Yeah, $180 is what we had listed here as the initiative, and we actually had in the budget for that one Smart Lab, $250. And that allowed for anything, you know, Carol might need to outfit the rooms, it also would allow for flexible furniture. The $180 is the actual acquisition of the Smart Lab system. So, $180 was the initiative, but $250 is what I had in for that one lab to cover all of those other things. There's no salaries, but it is finishing the room for its appropriate use. So, and then, when I updated on this, I thought, really, I should include the total cost of all those things, and I put 500 in for two.
That memory's scary, though. Moving on to the facility improvements, we've touched on a lot of these, so I won't spend a lot of time. The abatement and replacement of flooring at Everett at 320, now, that's the number we had used in the spring that we had projected. The bids came in lower, but we stayed with the projected number, because there are unknowns. And now, we've been lucky on this project and haven't incurred them, so hopefully, we're going to underspend that. But, having said that, it's possible that we could fail some proof rolls on the replacement at the drive at DPM, and that project goes over. So, we do try to be fairly middle-of-the-road in how we make assumptions around the unknowns. We touched on the fact, the replacement of the main and the side drives at Sheridan. Earlier, I think in May, April or May, you approved a bid for the replacement of gym lockers at DPM. And one of the components on our capital projects plan, our five-year capital projects plan, is now a security component. And we're looking at different products, different things that districts are doing. And one of, there's been a committee that's been formed, and they met and they talked about a number of things. One of the things they settled on was the installation of the 3M security film, which goes on the front doors and the windows, which makes it much more difficult to break through those areas. So, that's been included in this year's budget as well.
Ellen, could I dwell on that for just a minute? This, the security film is something that Dr. Wymer wound up learning about in the course of her duties as a security person, the point person for 67. She looked into it, started processing whether this would be a good solution for us. What is so interesting about the security film is, it's not bulletproof, but it makes a window unimaginably hard to get through. So, you can literally hit it with everything you have, and it's going to take you five or 10 minutes to get through, giving law enforcement time to get to the facility. So, it's really a relatively inexpensive solution for us, and I think a really smart step at this point. A very significant and hardly even visible, I don't know if, the windows don't look any different once you put this on there. So, it's really a smart upgrade, I think, to our security procedures.
And that price covers all buildings?
I believe so, yes. It doesn't cover every window in the buildings, or starting with the main entrances and the access points. And then, we'll assess and go from there. What we've just presented to you tonight, or laid out tonight, is really the culmination of work that's occurred in the Education Committee, work that's occurred in the Finance and Operations Committee, discussions at Mr. Semics Cabinet meetings, discussions at administrative board meetings. So, it truly is a culmination of work over the last 12, maybe 15 months. From my perspective, I think it's a very balanced budget, in the fact that it addresses both instructional and facility needs. And the fact that the revenues slightly exceed expenditures, because there are unknowns that we have to deal with, is very good. So, we recommend that you authorize placing this on public display, and we establish, and I didn't write the date down, I believe it was September 23rd, is the date for the public hearing and adoption of the 2014-2015 budget. Thank you.
I want to thank both of you for giving us such a detailed presentation here. This is something that obviously is a very important role of the Board, and we take it very seriously. And for those of us with less financial acumen than others, it was very, very well explained. So, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Moving along, I, do I make the motion here?
I think they want a motion, yeah.
I'm going to ask for a motion to display the tentative budget.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mrs. Fowler.
Mr. Schuler.
Aye.
Mr. Fulker.
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson.
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Lemke.
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski.
Aye.
Motion carries. Great. And now, we are going to move on to the 2014-2015 calendar with addition of the two late start dates proposed for DPM. If you'll recall, Renee Jevore and Tom Cartimone joined us, I believe that was the last two board meetings ago. Thank you, Mr. Fulker. And they are asking for two late start dates in the upcoming school year. And Mr. Semic, I'm going to throw it over to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. The proposal before the board at this time is for, in addition to the calendar of two late start dates for Deer Path. And one of the things I've discussed with board members, I've spoken to one-on-one at this point is, in terms of professional learning, we'd really like to have a much more ongoing weekly opportunity for professional development. In this case, there are only two late starts that are before the board and those are for a very specific topic. One of the things that both Ms. Jevore and Mr. Cartimone have been talking about for some time related to their staff, are the fact that the two sides of the building have different schedules. And one of the things that comes into play there is that when a student wants to participate in one activity on one side of the building, they can't, they can't wind up taking advantage of things on the other side. So, our ability to have staff move between buildings, one of the pinches in the schedule is for if a student wants to be in band and also participate in a tech class, they can't do that. And that unfortunately creates a situation where we have a student being discouraged effectively from participating in a really desirable activity such as band, or a really desirable activity such as a tech opportunity. So, we'd like to have those things be possible for all students to a greater degree. So, that is the outcome, the processing time that would be used for these late starts. Along with the late start, in addition to the calendar, it really brings up an opportunity to revisit some of the frequent conversations that I've had with parents in our community and also, obviously, I think that many of you have had as well. And that is some ongoing consternation, or to put it more mildly, ongoing interest in moving away from half-days and questioning the instructional value of a half-day as opposed to a full day of instruction. So, we took this opportunity to take another look at the calendar and see, are there some things that we could do, that we could reduce some of our half-days? And also, one of the important things is that this particular calendar, we have a large number of breaks that follow hot on the heels of winter breaks. You have a two-week winter break and in the two following months, basically, there are very few full five-day weeks. So, the strikeout on November 14th would be, and this is the proposal before the board at this time, is to eliminate a half-day of student attendance and make that a full day of institute day with no student attendance on that given day, on the 14th of November. And so, we would make up that student day later on in the year. January 16th is currently an institute day. The strikeout there would turn that day, January 16th, into a full day of student attendance. So, one of the issues there is winter break, as you can see, ends on, we come back to school on January 5th and 11 days later, we had a day scheduled off, a four-day weekend. That in and of itself is not entirely to be avoided because Martin Luther King Day is a non-negotiable day off of school statewide. But then, again, a short time later, we have President's Day, another extended break, and then a short time later, yet again, still in February, we have parent-teacher conferences. So, in discussions with each of you individually, one of the things that I think we need to do related to this longer term is to take a look at the half-days of parent-teacher conferences and then also the intent and the practice of those parent-teacher conferences. What do we want from them? How do they currently function? Are the half-days necessary in that time? Is the structure of the parent-teacher conference, is it creating the desired outcome for our staff and for our parents? Most importantly, is it addressing the student need? From my perspective, I have long, always actually been a great fan as a teacher, as an administrator, a principal of parent-teacher conferences. I think there are very few times in the course of a year that parents get to impress upon teachers. My life revolves around this child. The sun rises and sets on that child. And as I used to say when I was a principal, if you come to parents that question, hey, my kid's a senior, I don't really need to come to conferences anymore, what I'd say is, do you think you're more likely to get a call if your child has a really significant personality change, if you've got a relationship with a teacher, or if you don't have a relationship with a teacher? And the answer obviously is, of course, you will. So, of all the things we do in our life, the most important thing to us are our children. And so, it's an opportunity for parents to learn more about their child from the person that in many cases spends more time with their child than they do. So, particularly in elementary, that is the case. So, I think that we can take a longer look at our parent-teacher conferences for the upcoming schedule, upcoming calendar, for the following school year, not this coming school year, but the one after that. We should be in a position by that time to have processed this some more. I would not recommend a change to that conference schedule this year because, as so often happens, there's, there are many facets to this. And if we make a change without having a chance to process this, both with our union and also with our parents, we'll probably wind up making a change that had unintended consequences. And so, that is what is before the board at this time. I think the overall direction is a desire to move away from half-days wherever possible, maintain five-week days to the extent possible, yet also provide breaks on occasion through the schedule that really do benefit teaching and learning and also families need to get away.
Three really quick related questions. One, what's the minimum number of days that, of instruction that we're required to provide? Two, how many days do we provide based on this calendar? And three, are half-days considered a full day of instruction?
A half-day is considered a full day of instruction. You have to have four in-service days.
That's a state requirement?
That's that.
Was that a contracted?
No, those are, you can't have more than that in a calendar. So, the number of required days.
176 student attendance days.
That is the minimum. And then, of course, you can have as many beyond that as you want to.
And how many does this calendar provide us, including the half-days? Right on the money?
Right. 176.
All right. Mike, you talked about, you talked about looking at the next year's calendar and the parent-teacher conferences. When is that brought before the board? I seem to think it's September, October. Can anybody give us an answer?
This calendar, the new camp was approved a year ago, more than, so it's all thinking that we'll be asking you to approve a calendar for 1516 and then asking you to amend it after we've done a full year of conferences. So, you should be getting in September or October, a proposed calendar for 1516.
So, as we're talking about the calendar for 1516, you mentioned you're going to look at parent-teacher conferences. And I'm reiterating something that you and I have talked about, but I would encourage you also to look at moving professional development to the summer and the tri-district day, for example, that it's a little too late in the game now, but it's not too late in the game for next year.
Yeah, one of the things that we talked about is, and we've had some experiences with this at the high school for a variety of reasons. I mean, this last year because of snow days and the year before because of a minor interruption to the school year, is the value of the time after school for professional development. So, after the school year ends, it's really the only time when teachers don't have something that is pressing on them. So, any other time that we do professional development with our staff, kids are coming, got to get in my room, got to get the room ready, got to work on all these things. At the end of the school year, there's really a big bang for your buck for that. So, that's something I'd really like to see us expand where possible.
And my other comment, just for those who aren't on the call with you, is 46% of the Chicagoland schools have the Columbus Day waiver and have school on Columbus Day. We are part of the 54% that don't.
We are in the majority.
Opportunity, and that's another opportunity.
Yeah, on Columbus Day, there, the, our ability to change Columbus Day for this year, we could do that. It is part of our SEIU labor agreement that Columbus Day will be a holiday. So, there's some things to work through with that if we do ever want to change that. Also, there are some required days from the state, Martin Luther King Jr. being one of those.
Basic point is, is in September, we're going to be asked to vote on the next year's calendar. We're going to go through this conversation again.
Right.
I'm hoping that there's more significant changes, so.
I just, as we're looking at new calendars, would ask that we also look for synergy with 115. Given, you know, that we have a shared services model and we're one community, it's difficult for those of us who do have children at both districts. You know, Friday, November 14th, the high school is in session, but Friday, January 16th, the high school is not in session. And so, therefore, as, you know, families are planning trips or whatever, you're going to be yanking from one or the other place, which I think also hurts a teacher's ability in her classroom to work with the kids, so.
Is there any reason that we, is there a specific reason we are not swapping, that we cannot swap those dates?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
I'm just wondering if there's a specific reason that we cannot swap those dates, where you would keep the full day on November 14th and you would, you would go back to using the institute day for Friday, January 16th?
Yes, if we had the Friday, the 14th as a full day for students, the 14th at the high school, that's an in-service day at the high school, correct? So, at the high school on the 14th, that is a, that's an institute day for them. So, if we had a full student day, but that's not what you were saying, Beth, right?
It's not on the calendar if it is.
Okay. Go ahead, yeah.
So, originally, when this calendar was designed and presented, I reviewed the memo from Paul Saminsky. And at that time, in an effort to align with the high school, Friday, January 16th was a day off for both districts. Here we are now, more than a year later, making some late-in-the-game recommended changes to accommodate the requests, to really make an effort to move away from the half-days. So, the change that you're seeing proposed for Friday, January 16th is in order to eliminate a half-day overall. And we were able to eliminate the half-day on November 14th and replace it with an institute day. So, and without adding to the end of the school year, we took it from January 16th.
Actually, there is another way without adding to the end of the school day. Beth's comment and my comments are not mutually exclusive. They can be perfectly consistent. Have both districts have to, go to school on both days and do the teacher conversations during the summer. If they can go to school, both districts can go to school November 14th, both districts can go to school January 16th. You can end the school day, the school year earlier in June and you can do professional development in the summer. You don't need to add in June. You can add during the school year. Everybody can go to school between Labor Day and Memorial Day.
We'd have to pay our teachers to come afterwards.
Correct.
And it would be difficult to require them to be here unless that was something that was...
I think that in the contract, as I've been told, we can require them up to a certain number of days, five days, 10, there's, so, there certainly are other alternatives.
Yeah, I think a change that significant without, yep.
And with that, one of the things that is particularly important is these in-service days, in this case, earlier in the year, there's so many initiatives that we have going on. We really don't want to move away from the earlier, early in the year in-service time. The high school's got a new tech initiative going on and, I mean, they really want to have every minute they can get to do that.
I understand and I'm trying to tie what Beth said, which makes sense, with that 60 days from now, we're going to look at a calendar from a year from now. I understand that school starts in 45 days.
Yep.
But I also understand in 60 days, we're going to be presented a calendar for next year. I really hope that we don't have the same conversation again because we will.
Part of the problem is the timing of the approval of the calendar. And I know some of us have been struggling with this for many years.
Yep.
When we have the discussion, it's always, it's too late because this was approved six months ago. I'm really glad to hear, both here and I know other discussions, that you're aware of some of the community's concerns, the board's concerns about the disruption in the momentum and the continuity of the school days. And it was highlighted and exaggerated last year because of the snow days. But it became ridiculous after a long two-week break. First of all, you have a long one-week break for Thanksgiving, then you have more disruption, then you have two weeks for Christmas, and then we had a series of three- and four-day weeks, whether it's a snow day, a half-day, a teacher, institute day. And that's, that's not good. But I stepped back and I just, I segregated the calendar into days off for holidays and breaks. There's another category for early let-out days. And there's another category for late-start days. There's another category for institute days. And there's another category for teacher conference days. And there's another category for half-days. Some of those overlap. Some of the half-days overlap with teacher conference and institute days, some don't. But it, for years, I've been feeling like it's the boiling frog problem. It's like, well, this day makes sense and this is why. And this day makes sense and this is why. But when you put the whole calendar together and you look at how many full weeks and months of education we have and how many days are broken up by half-days, we need to start from square one and just give the whole thing a lot harder look. And I know from the top, there's support for that. But we are tired of hearing it's too late, we can't do it. I mean, we're adding, we're adding late-start dates at the last minute.
And we're, we're making that, so we are, we are...
Net-net, these changes add no school hours to kids, zero.
Can I just throw one suggestion out for your consideration for this coming school year? So, the high school has parent conference day on November 6th and then Friday, November 7th is a no-school day. Given that that Friday, November 14th day isn't tied to anything in particular, would it be possible to do the institute day on the same day as the high school, the Friday prior November 7th?
The eighth-grade class does go to Washington on the 14th, just saying.
And it is tied to the end of District 67's trimester, so that's part of it, but I just wanted to add that I think schools often fall into patterns and habits with their calendars. So, the categories that we listed, you know, for me, I see that on all the different, they don't often take, like, that and take a whole different look at it. And I understand that's what you're asking us to do. I understand that that's what you're asking us to do, to really, to really come at it from a different perspective, for a much cleaner, more consistent, you know, calendar. So-
And we don't want to have a debate on the value of institute days and teacher conference days. It's just how and when. It's not if, that's not the question.
I think it's an important conversation to have. And certainly, right, and I think what Rick is saying, we don't negate the fact, the importance of the time to give teachers to work together. It's of the utmost of importance. It's just how are we going to maximize and increase the time that the kids are in school? And Jennifer, did you say it's 176 days, the minimum? And that we are at the bare minimum? So that's disheartening. It's disheartening. I don't know if that's something that is contractual with LFEA. I'm not aware of that. Ben is not here anymore. But that's something that we've got to look at when we renegotiate, if that is the case, I believe.
We rarely compare ourselves to CPS, but CPS, I believe, is at 202. We don't strive to be CPS, but I think they're at 202.
And particularly, when you layer on what we talked about before with the park testing and the extra testing requirements of that, I think it just all rolls up into your boiling frog analogy.
Okay, so on that note, on the table is... On the table is the approval of the 2014-2015 calendar. It's really an amendment to the calendar, which includes the addition of two late-start dates. And I would also add that it includes the elimination of a half-day of student attendance on Friday, November 14th, making that a full institute day. And it changes Friday, January 16th, from an institute day to a full day of student attendance. Can I get a motion?
I move that we adopt the, I don't know, the revised calendar.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Aye. Mr. Lemke.
Aye.
Mr. Fulker.
Aye.
Mr. Borowski.
Aye.
Mr. Schuler.
Nay.
Mrs. Fisher.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we're going to go on to the approval of the human resources items. One moment, please. Okay. I move that the Lake Forest School District 67 Board of Education approve the human resources items as presented. Do I need to go through each one? No.
Can I ask a question on it?
Oh, yes.
The replacement for the math teachers who became math specialists, I'm not sure 100% if they're included. I think they are. Are they included? And so my question is the question I ask now every time, were those positions posted?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, they were posted. The math specialist positions were posted, and then we filled those. So those, most of those were backfilled last month. So that would have been on the June HR report, because we finalized that at the end of the school year, and then immediately posted their classroom positions. The only one that took a while to fill was the sixth grade Laura McDowell's position, which evolved from just a math position due to a reduction of sectioning. That was becoming a math-science position, is how it ended up getting reconfigured, and that's on this month's report.
I apologize if I missed the June meeting. So the backfill positions for the math teachers who became math specialists, were they filled internally, externally, both?
They were filled externally, yes, correct. So Nikki Hanneman went from being the coach to a specialist at Sheridan, and then Katie and Jessica's positions were filled, there's a third grade that's now at Sheridan, and a kindergarten at Everett.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Laura. Yes, that was presented at the June meeting. Okay, so the human resources items include hiring resignations, terminations, family and medical leave absence, and change in status. Can I, do you have another question? Yes, I'm going to ask for a motion for the approval of the human resources items.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Fulker.
Aye.
Mr. Lemke.
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson.
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher.
Aye.
Mr. Schuler.
Aye.
Mr. Borowski.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we move on to the consent agenda. This is the approval of dismissments, payrolls, and financial statements from June 2014, minutes of a regular meeting, June 24th, 2014, minutes of an executive session, June 24th, 2014, and disposal of audio recordings, December 11th, 2012. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Comment, Mr. Lemke? Madam, roll call.
Mr. Lemke.
Aye.
Mr. Borowski.
Aye.
Mr. Schuler.
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson.
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher.
Aye.
Mr. Fulker.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, we have two FOIA requests. Sean Tong, non-resident, and Adam Antrazowski, non-resident. Okay. Seeing as we have come to the end of our agenda before we adjourn, the announcements. Monday, August 25th is an institute day, no student attendance. Tuesday, August, this is very fitting, very fitting. Tuesday, August 26th is an institute day, no student attendance. Wednesday, August 27th is the first day of student attendance, and that is a full day. And Monday, September 1st, 2014, Labor Day, there is no school. Our next Board of Education meeting will be right here, 7:00 PM, Tuesday, September 23rd, 2014. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting of the Lake Forest District 67 Board of Education?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Borowski.
Aye.
Mr. Schuler.
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson.
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher.
Aye.
Mr. Lemke.
Aye.
Mr. Fulker.
Aye.
We are adjourned.